We're going to call the meeting in order. Please stand up and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Member Steele?
Here.
Member Lion Welch is absent. Member Frederick, here. Member Billsborough?
Here.
Member Holbrook?
Here.
Member Dean?
Here.
Member Lake?
Here.
Next, we have the appointment of a temporary chairperson during the nomination. It has been all except one year when somebody got wild.
Second nomination and move to close nomination. Other thing? What was that?
All right. Next, we have the appointment of the temporary secretary by the temporary chairperson, which is you, right?
No, normally it's someone.
Claire.
Yeah, I can do it.
Okay, Claire. Merry Christmas. Next, we have the election of officers. President, zero motion. Motion for Dr. Look. Second.
There are other nominations.
Are there any other nominations? No? Do we have to vote?
All in favor. Yeah, as long as there's a motion to close and support for that, all in favor. We don't have to roll call.
All in favor. Aye. Opposed. Next, secretary, is there a motion? Nominate Claire.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed. Congratulations, Claire.
Thank you.
Next, treasurer, is there a motion?
Nominate Kate.
Is there a second?
Kate, my second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Congratulations, Kate, you're a brand-new treasurer.
Thank you.
Now for vice president.
I nominate Jeff Holbrook. Second.
Move to close nominations. Pretty good to get closed up fast. All in favor? Aye. Opposed. This is an honorary position, you know, because you get to be the MASP board representative. So far. Visitors, delegations, and communications. Yes. To the Owens, Kimball?
That's not, that's a presentation.
Okay.
That'll follow.
Okay.
But I don't know of any other visitors.
They can have two or three months. Jump up.
Now's your time, Howard.
You can chime.
Ready?
I sat you out for six laps, you're all set.
No, because you were the man. Good evening, everybody. We are here to ask to introduce ourselves and our firm. We are TMP Architecture. We're also bringing Ignite for Engineering Services to partner with the district in a future program. My name is, this works well, yeah? My name is Adolfo Blanca. I'm a partner with the firm. I'm the director of the Kalamazoo office and will be leading the process here. We have Tracy.
My name is Tracy Zell. I'm a project manager and project architect with the team.
My name's Lance B. Kraft, electrical engineer and principal at Ignite Design.
So we didn't want to take much time of your meeting today. We just wanted to introduce our office. We have about eighty-four people right now in the office, between the two of them. We're based here in Michigan. One office in Blooming Hills on the east side of the state, and we're in Kalamazoo on the west side of the state. We have sixty-five years of experience working only in the educational market. That's ninety-five percent of our practice. And that's one thing that is different from other firms. We're dedicated to K-12 design and college/university design in our office.
Yeah, my name's Lance with Ignite Design. We're a engineering company, mechanical/electrical plumbing, based in Kalamazoo and Grand Rapids. We have twenty-five people. A little over fifty percent of our work is in the K-12 market, so we know it very well. I'm very close to it. I've been doing it my whole thirty years. It's been my primary focus. My wife's a teacher in Madawan, got two boys, so it's definitely a passion. But our approach is a little different. We're very intentional about the partners that we work with, not just architectural partners, but our clients as well. It is a true partnership, the way we feel. We're able to walk the facility of the day with Buzz and just get an understanding of that environment that he has to deal with day-to-day and look forward to building a strong relationship with him and becoming a good resource for him moving forward in the future.
Yeah, we know that you need help with the high school building, of course. That's the one that we toured today, and we had a chance to go into pretty much every single room, although, you know, we'll do more research in the future. But all we brought today were some images of schools that were your same situation that we renovated in the past. These are recent projects that we have done together, some of them with Ignite. And we just wanted to go through some images about music rooms, for example. Though your music rooms are in good shape, are a little newer than the rest of the building, you know, there are always improvements that could be made. We have here some other spaces like media centers and collaboration areas, you know, a little different than your media center in the high school, but certainly opportunities to make improvements there. Some STEM rooms and some labs that we have done also in other high schools and different districts in Michigan. Here you have also some common spaces, you know, some of the office space, receptions and lobbies and hallways that connect different spaces in the high schools. And some athletic facilities as well, you know, some aquatic centers. I know that you guys are very proud of your aquatic center in town, and I think it's a great facility that you've managed to share. Some gymnasiums and some weight rooms and entryways to athletics fields. So basically, that's what we wanted to do today, and then we can leave it open for questions if you have any questions for us. No questions?
No, we're thinking.
I appreciate very much your coming down here and introducing yourselves. Thank you for that information.
Lance, you mentioned in our tour that you had some familiarity with our buildings already through some of your past experiences?
Yes, so Ignite Design, we started Ignite about three years ago, so the five owners all left the same company that previously had worked in the district. Started Ignite just to do it a little bit more intentional, a little more personal approach. So yes, I was actually the electrical engineer that worked on the elementary school and the middle school and the latest renovations, so very familiar with the district. Did the assessment years ago with OAK, so know the district very well and know Buzz, worked with him through the years. Two, three months ago, we came out and helped Buzz a little bit on the Filter First program that the state's implementing, some guidance on that as well, so very familiar with your facilities and your folks, so.
Yeah, the other familiarity that we have is actually with OAK. We're currently working together with them in other districts with large renovations, new buildings, so a lot of experience working together. So we have a team that has worked together.
So Ignite is a company of its own or that works with TMP?
Correct. Correct. We're a CMO company, just we're engineers only, so we don't have architecture in-house. We team up with architects on projects.
That was a decision that we made years ago, that we just wanted to focus on the architectural design. So our services are pre-bon architecture and interior design and furniture.
And I would say our motto, same with TMP, is we're a partner all the way through, not just the design part of it, but we want to be a partner at the back end of it, too. A year after construction, two years after construction, you're having issues with whatever, we want to be that resource to help you through those, because you're going to have problems in every construction project. It's just the nature of construction. You're going to have issues, so like, we want to be known for that partnership all the way through, not just the design of the building, but the life of the building.
So your company would do the mechanical and electrical?
Yep, and plumbing.
And plumbing?
Yep.
And wouldn't need to be bid out?
No, so we do the design part of it. So we produce the documents, similar to the architectural. We're on the design side, working hand-in-hand with them, but also involved on the construction side. We work very closely with our contractor partners and OAK and our CM partners, again, being good stewards and good partners all the way through.
Okay. Now I understand, thank you.
All right. Definitely. Good questions.
Tom, do you want to stand up? I think everybody would recognize Tom. So Tom is from the construction management company Owens and Kimball, who's been involved in the last, as the construction management company in the last couple of bond attempts. So they've got a good history, historical knowledge of what this district has gone through towards renovate, you know, towards its goals to renovate and update the high school. They've been involved in recent projects that Terry took on before I got here, the lighting and heating in the schools, and so we've worked very closely with them just in this past year as well. And Tracy used to work for OAK before going to TMP, so there's a lot of close collaboration there and a lot of history there that I found is very attractive for this type of approach in company.
Yeah, I've worked with all three of them for many, many years and feel that it's a good team going forward here and try to understand what the district's going to need with high school and what that program's going to look like and let those guys kind of decide and kind of help develop that. I think it's going to be really good for the district, so looking forward to working with them and the district as we continue going on, so.
Give a video for us.
He was going to make it today.
Anyway, you didn't bring any slides or anything?
I was trying to be quick for you.
See? They were trying to be.
Two minutes in and out.
Nice job. Sit down. All right, thank you, guys.
Yeah, of course. You know, so I don't know if we even have that much time, so we will. Thank you for your best. Take a look when you can sleep at three in the morning. You can read this.
Credit card here?
Yes.
It doesn't work very well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You're welcome to stay, but I'm sure you don't want.
Good to see you, Tom.
Thank you.
No problem. Happy to help.
Thank you. Yeah, we can do me.
Okay, next, we have the superintendent Flynn presents Governor Whitmer's certificate of proclamation.
In front of you in the red folder is a certificate signed by the governor for Board Appreciation Month, and I would like to read her proclamation in honor of you and what you do. So whereas Michigan is home to nearly six hundred locally-elected school boards that work to enrich the lives of Michigan students through education and directly influencing instruction in Michigan's public schools, and whereas local school board members are exceptional public servants who have dedicated and committed themselves to this duty by governing school districts, listening to parent voices, and advancing student achievement and well-being in the schools and communities they serve, and whereas during this month we join with the Michigan Association of School Boards, Michigan Department of Education, local school districts and community organizations to recognize and raise awareness of the countless efforts and contributions of local school boards and school board members throughout Michigan. And now therefore, I, Gretchen Whitmer, Governor of Michigan, do hereby proclaim January of 2025 as School Board Recognition Month in Michigan. And I personally would like to thank you for all of your support and all of your communication with me. I think every month we continue to grow and we continue to do what's good for kids, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hardway.
Oh, okay. I'm just going to read you the card from Max Larson's staff and dear Coldwater Community Schools Board of Education. On behalf of Max Larson Elementary Teachers and Staff, we thank you for your dedication to our CCS family. Your volunteer service is very much appreciated. Sincere's regards, Max Larson Staff and Teachers.
Thank you very much.
The chocolate on the table is from the staff at Max Larson.
Oh, nice.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And are we doing the Toby Burton thing? Aye. You got one job for Mrs. Reardon, but she couldn't be here, so hopefully I'll be able to play Jefferson's thank you here.
Learning in the best way. Thank you, School Board, for making our day. For giving us learning in every way. From children to the books we read, you give us everything we need. With your support, we can all grow in every subject we get to know. We thank you for helping us learn. We love our school and want to learn more. Thank you, School Board. We appreciate you.
Your life is full without the books we read and learn. We pray to help you build a farm. We strive to make you a great farm. So we miss you for being a parent, for all the amazing things you do.
Thank you, School Board.
Thank you, School Board, for helping us learn. The world is ours, we can do more. From the moment we start, we learn so much. You give us the torch, the torch, the love and the passion. With every step we learn and grow, and with your help, our dreams will glow. Thank you for making the journey so bright, with your support, our dreams are bright.
Thank you, School Board, for all the work you do. We hope for more, making every day. We need school boards, but that gets us going. But I want to have you help us.
From science to history, math, and art, you make sure we get a good job.
You chose to breathe that road, and we can't wait to see where we go. We will, we thank you in a wonderful way, you help us learn every single day.
You give us the chance to go to school and learn, and we thank you for making it possible. We thank you for your love and care for making us learn.
Thank you, School Board, for helping us learn. That was a beautiful dream to be free. Free to learn, free to dream, with your help, we can begin.
We have the council paper in mind. We have the chance to learn and work. We thank you for your support and support. Very early, again, to make it back to the day, or in more. And we do this learning to truly improve. Thank you for the teachers, teachers, for all the support and love we receive.
Give us full books and a chance to dream, make, and learn again. We're grateful for all that you do, our learning journey is bright for you.
Thank you, School Board, for opening the door to a world of learning and so much more.
We have the chance to learn and play and discover something new every day. Thank you for all that you do, our world of possibilities begins with you.
Hopefully, see that anything is possible with your support, our dreams are accessible.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. You're welcome. She told me she'd do me a solid to have them read, so I was excited to see this. Those are the only people that you have that know how to read in our district? No.
He wanted you to see the improvement.
Oh. Very good. Next, we have approval of the agenda deletions and additions. Are there any? There are none. Well, we have a board addition. Mr. Billsborough, congratulations on your election.
Thank you.
And Kate, your reelection. Congratulations. Appointment of the MASP liaison person. I nominate Mr. Holbrook. Yes.
Do I need a second for that?
No, I think it's just. Do I have to vote on that?
I don't think so.
No, it's automatic. You're doing very good.
Yeah, we're good.
Oh, there is an action item here. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? This is your chance, Joe. Next, we have the board compensation. It's recommended that members of the board continue to be compensated at a rate of forty-five dollars per meeting, which is minus social security, taxes, a bunch of other things. Be it resolved, the Board of Education authorizes forty-five dollars per meeting compensative compensation to all board members, inclusive of the regular special and committee meetings, with a limit of thirty-six total meetings per year, not to exceed a total of one thousand six hundred and twenty dollars for the 2025 calendar year. I remember, so close to that.
Oh, you tried.
Maybe you have.
You tried.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have appointment of the board advisory committee meeting, minute, or committees. And it is going to go by age on the board, I guess, age that you joined it in. So I am going to take.
Length of time on the board or age, when you joined the board?
I don't, I think usually.
I think it's age when you're joined.
Years of service.
Yeah. So I have a couple of years on most of you.
Ten.
I'll take budget and finance.
You're next, Claire.
Building and grounds.
Budget, finance, please.
Yeah, I don't think you have a choice on that. Kate's treasurer.
Kate has to take budget and finance.
Kate's chair. Of what?
You have to take budget and finance.
Okay. I'll take budget and finance.
Just helping you out, because you're new.
Then it would be Kristen.
She wants building and grounds, doesn't she?
Building and grounds, personnel. District improvement or athletic, we're our top three. You have a personnel.
She had them, well, the order you gave me.
Just how she did it to me.
Building and grounds.
Okay.
Building and grounds. Robert.
I'll do building and grounds, too.
Mr. Billsborough.
I'll take athletic.
Okay. I will take personnel.
I will take finance.
Take what?
Finance. As the alternate.
They're all gone.
Oh, we've all filled them all?
Yeah.
Jeff.
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you. Policy.
Building and grounds.
So then we do the alternate.
Oh, I have to, we only had two.
I'll do athletic.
District improvement. That's Kristen.
Personnel.
For Kristen? Yep.
Me?
Yep.
I'll do athletic.
And Mr. Billsborough?
Personnel still available?
Yes.
Okay. Policy. Policy. District improvement or? District improvement. So Claire's choosing district improvement.
Okay, got it. And then Jeff wanted policy. Okay, so policy's full, too. With the exception of the alternate. We got left. So we've got a third member needed for district improvement. Are you on there?
Yep.
Yep, you are.
Or an alternate for any of them.
I will do alternate or athletic. Okay. Sure. Kristen's next. Yeah.
There's, they're all, all the main ones are, or all the members are gone, right?
Well, we need a third for district improvement, and that was also a choice of hers.
Oh, yeah, give her that. Okay.
So all are full with the exceptions of alternates, except athletic, alternate is full there.
Do you have the name?
Uh, yes.
Do the alternate for personnel.
Jim?
Alternate for building and grounds.
What's left?
We need an alternate for, well, you're on budget and finance.
And he's on policy.
Policy, he's on policy. District improvement?
Okay.
No, we do that. Okay, so I think it's you now. Is it clear now?
I'll do alternate for finance. And then.
I'm voting down here, right? So.
Yeah, so.
So just plug me in there and then somebody else can do an alternate.
So I'm assuming an alternate MASP, alternate policy. I do the MASP alternate, okay? There's one alternate left for policy advisory.
So Kristen?
It's Kristen, so.
Okay.
Do that.
All right.
Okay.
Next, we have the approval of the minutes from 12:16:24. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the consent agenda with our communications. No. Personnel recommendations, Mr. Flynn.
Be it resolved that relative to certified staff recommendations, the Board of Education accept with regret after serving Coldwater Community Schools for twenty-five years, the retirement resignation of Max Larson Elementary Teacher Amy Sekander effective July 1, 2025. The Board of Education approve the internal transition to replace Ryan Sheets with Nathan Waterbury for the math curriculum chair position effective immediately upon board approval. Relative to support staff recommendations, the Board of Education approve the administrative recommendation to employ Kahija Al-Jabli for the part-time ELL support personnel position at Jefferson Elementary effective immediately upon board approval. The Board of Education accept with regret the resignation of Tamara Pitts from the bus driver position for Coldwater Community Schools effective January 17, 2025. The Board of Education approve the administrative recommendation to employ Brenda Woods for the bus driver position for Coldwater Community Schools effective immediately upon board approval. The Board of Education approve. The Board of Education approve the administrative recommendations for the following extra duty position as outlined below. Jeremy Douglas, girls' eighth grade B team basketball coach.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the recommendation to approve and accept gifts. Recently, the administration was made aware of the following gifts offered by the donors listed below. Culvers of Coldwater Monetary Funds to be used for new uniforms, Lake Middle School Wrestling Program, one hundred dollars. Long Street Group LLC, Long Street Living. Monetary funds to be used for new uniforms for the Lake Middle School Wrestling Program, five hundred dollars. Shane DeGryff, T E E, Hiltquist Family Foundation Monetary Funds for the purchase of bookshelves, Lakeland Elementary School, four thousand dollars. E V Klein Youth and Family Center Incorporated on behalf of the Good Better Best Grant. Monetary funds, Sarah Davis, Coldwater High School, five hundred dollars. Additionally, individuals, businesses listed below have donated monetary funds to the Coldwater Athletics for the Coldwater High School Boys Volleyball Club, Southern Marsh Realty, to a hundred dollars. Kevin Shepherd, five hundred and thirty-five dollars. Jalen Johnson, twenty-five dollars. Robert Rumsay, forty dollars. Floyd Johnson, forty dollars. Timothy Finch, forty dollars. Edward C. Lake Junior, sixty dollars. Uh, Ruth Lee Young, sixty dollars, and Pam Jones, a hundred dollars. The generous and continued support of the donors listed above is sincerely appreciated. We ask that the board accept the gifts noted and acknowledge the donor's generosity. Be it resolved, the Board of Education gratefully accepts the gifts as presented, and be further resolved that the letter of appreciation on behalf of the board be sent to the donors indicated above for their worthwhile and generous gifts. Next, we have the approval of the December accounts for payment and financial statements as submitted. That would be the treasurer.
That's right, John. Okay. Be it resolved that the following accounts for December be approved for payment as follows. General fund accounts in the amount of two million, two hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-three cents. Special revenue accounts in the amount of twenty-two thousand, twenty-two thousand, five hundred and five dollars and twenty-three cents. And be it resolved that the general fund financial statements be approved as presented.
Thank you very much. As the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have building reports. Uh, any principals would like to add to the reports? No? Thank you. Director of Curriculum and Instruction report, anything to add? Coming up later. Uh, board committee reports, we had none. Superintendent reports?
Uh, I've provided you with my superintendent report for this month, just to highlight some things that have been going on in the last month. And, and this is all good things that are going on inside Coldwater Community Schools. Back on January eighteenth, uh, the district hosted at Lake Middle School a family information meeting for Arabic families in the community, where about fifty-five people were in attendance, and it was presented in both English and Arabic, giving information to families on how to stay informed about school events through the newsletters, emails, and the district app, getting involved in their children's education, accessing Skyward, who to communicate with at the schools if they have questions, and promoting safe and responsible and respectful behavior at school. I was not able to attend, I was out of town, but I've heard wonderful things about that Saturday afternoon, and the group is now looking to do another meeting for our Spanish-speaking families to have the same type of community outreach and connections. So kudos to the staff members at the, at the junior high and the high school, everybody involved that has been working to make the, behind the scenes to make these meetings happen. I think that's a huge step forward. Our water management plan and our filter-first plan, the state has come in and said that we're required to have a water management plan available no later than last Friday, and we have one, and it's available, and I cannot take any credit for it. The credit all goes to Buzz and Nick Cahus, who have done a ton of work and, and working with Mr. Dancer, because a lot of this is grant-funded, and there's going to be changes to any faucet that has drinking water in it, and those changes will be made throughout the next few months. We'll have to remove some drinking fountains in some areas, cap some fountains in some areas, and add some fountains in some areas. So the state's given us real strict guidelines, but between Mr. Dancer and Buzz and Nick, we are in really, really good shape, and, and so they've been doing a fantastic job. The Aquatic Center Committee Meeting, first official meeting was today, and it was good. It was good that we had representatives from the county, from the city, from, uh, from parents and our new director and myself, and from the, from the rec department. So we talked about our goals, we talked about, um, the Aquatic Center providing this board with a monthly report like the buildings do, and started to have good conversation about what does success look like? And, and so that's what I'm going to ask you to think about over the course of the next few weeks. In your opinion, we're doing a lot of good things, and we've got a lot of wheels in motion, but what does success ultimately look like for the Aquatic Center? And, uh, but a really, really good conversation today, a really good start, so I was very proud of that. Last week was a countywide meeting of school and law enforcement leaders, the superintendents from around the county, sheriff, M S P, local chiefs, the county prosecuting attorney, an attorney from True Law Firm to talk about school threat assessments, having a threat assessment team in place. Do police officers need to have search warrants to get information on a kid? What information are we allowed to give to law enforcement legally? What about students with I E Ps? How, how important is that to, to get to law enforcement? So, um, again, the first of what we see is many conversations with, with those, with those police, uh, law enforcement leaders and school district leaders throughout the county. So, and that was brought to us by the county prosecuting attorney, so that was started at, at their level. It wasn't driven. And that's where we talked about, I had the opportunity to talk about the community forum that we had talked about a little bit, and, and getting everybody on track to do that hopefully in, in March or April to, to get the community together and listen to a presentation about just how important it is to talk to kids about the severity of what can happen if they make a threat, whether it's credited or not, what, what, how it can change their lives, so. Just a lot of really good things that have been going on. And last but not least, Chartwell's a big feather in their cap. They qualified for a state waiver to provide food to children of Arabic families during Ramadan. As we know, kids aren't supposed to eat during the day, only before sunup and after sundown, and, and this was discussed at the, the community meeting as well. But where a lot of parents say, we have plenty of food at home, we can't say that about all of our kids. So we are one of very, very few schools in the state that even put, put the effort into this waiver. So larger school districts like Ann Arbor aren't doing this for their kids. So I, I give Tamara Santora and Chartwell's a lot of credit for going the extra mile for our kids and our families.
These are the Arabic kids who cannot eat during the day?
Correct. So, so they, they can't eat breakfast and lunch.
Right.
But at the end of the day, they'll be released from, they have to sign up, and they'll be released from class five minutes early to go to the cafeteria, grab their bagged food, that would have been breakfast and lunch, and take it home to be able to eat it at home.
Okay.
So kids don't go without eating.
That's good.
Yep. That's all.
That's it?
That's it.
Any discussion items? No? Uh, next, we have the action items, review and acceptance of the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five district annual education report. The Michigan Department of Education requires districts and schools to communicate annual education reports to parents in the community to fulfill the requirements under the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. The twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five annual education reports for Coldwater Community Schools are posted on the district's website. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five annual education reports as posted on the district's website. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
You're up.
Perfect. Yeah, so this time of year, all districts across the state are posting their annual education reports, cover letters. Reading has been a big focus to us. If I was going to look through all of the data that's in there, I would say a trend that's positive for us right now is that all that hard work, third through seventh grade trends of proficiency have gone up in our district, which is a positive sign, and that should trickle up into the middle school and high school. A big initiative for us in the district is high reliability schools, and that really focuses buildings in the district around the right work. There's leading indicators in each area's, uh, safe, supportive, collaborative schools, effective instruction and curriculum. Those are the three levels that are mandatory for high reliability schools, and obviously, our teams have to have time to do that. So at our most recent professional development, uh, teams got together. We got together at a K twelve at the Dirce Center, and then building teams were able to go back and start to focus on plans for the upcoming, the remainder of this school year, and then plans for next school year as well.
How about other subjects in the school, like STEM subjects, math?
There were some strong math scores as well. As I tell all teams, it's okay to be where you're at, it's just not okay to stay there. So we'll continually approve. Uh, that's our mindset, is continuous improvement.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the recommendation to approve the quote from Dattronics for the purchase and installation of a new touchpad timer and scorer for the Dr. Robert W. Brown Aquatic Center. The current electronic touchpad system at the center used by the swim teams needs to be replaced. District paying three quotes for the replacement of the system. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the quote from Dattronics for the purchase and installation of a new touchpad timer and scorer for the Dr. Robert W. Brown Aquatic Center in the amount of twenty thousand, three hundred and five dollars, to be paid for out of the district's general fund as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? I suspect this has to be a roll call. Don't you think? Or not?
We can. Anything can be a roll call.
Let's do that.
Okay. Uh, member Lion Welch is absent. Member Frederick?
Yes.
Member Billsborough?
Yes.
Member Holbrook?
Yes.
Member Steele?
Yes.
Member Dean?
Yes.
Member Lake?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the recommendation to approve the annual floor maintenance in the Coldwater High School gym as part of the yearly maintenance of the floor of the high school gymnasium. Administration requests board approval for refinishing services by the Floor Care Concepts for a total of twelve thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventy-six cents. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approve the refinishing services of the high school gymnasium floor by Floor Care Concepts in the amount of twelve thousand, two hundred and sixty-five seventy-six as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion?
Yes, I've talked to varsity basketball coaches, and they are not happy with the condition of the floor. And so I've also talked to Paul by email, and I don't know what he decided, but I think that it's, it's not a good idea maybe to approve this until we have a better, uh, condition of our basketball floor.
Is it bad because it needs to be refinished?
It's slippery. It's very slippery.
Or even after they refinish it, it's bad?
Yes. And they, and of course, you know, it's not good for basketball players to be slipping around on, on the floor, and if it's slippery, it could cause injuries. So I think this, this company needs to, we need to look twice at approving this, this company's work until they have a floor that we can-
What would you like to do?
Is, is it slippery because it needs refitted?
So, so that's what we're looking into. As, as I responded in my email earlier today, this is the third school district that I've worked with, with Floor Care Concepts, and we've always, in the districts that I've worked with, had a Christmas break refinishing of, of the gym floor. What they do in the summertime because of the heat is they just do a skim, a simple coat, but they come back and they do the main in the, in the wintertime. This is the first I've heard of, of a district having an issue with the floor being slippery afterwards. So, um, as, as early as this morning, Buzz has reached out to the company. We've set up a meeting with, well, we're setting up a meeting, I don't know the date and the time, but we'll include the, the coaches in that as well. If it's something that Floor Care Concepts did that created this issue, I'm, I'm confident that it will be fixed by them. If it's something that we, as our custodial crew, have or haven't done in the regular maintenance of that surface, we'll address that as well. One thing that, and this kind of goes back to another topic that Claire and I talked about last month, we have a multi-year contractor agreement with Floor Care Concept that was in place when, when I got here. And so this routine maintenance is part of it. What I understand is prior to me coming here, because it was just a contractual thing, it wasn't brought, brought to the board for approval every year. This is the first time we've brought it to the board for approval for complete transparency of the costs involved. So if there's, if there's an issue with it, we'll be addressing it as quickly as we can. I'm not saying there's not an issue, but we need to get them down here to see it and hear it from the coaches and, and determine a, a plan of correction.
Did the feedback you got, is it just since the summer skim coat or whatever, or has it always been an issue?
I don't know how long it's been like this, but they both, both of varsity coaches complained about it, and they have gone to the A D about it. What's that?
That was my next question. They've talked to-
They've gone to the A D, and they didn't tell me, and maybe I should have asked, how long it's been a problem, but they, they are both very unhappy with it right now.
So we'll be addressing it as quickly as we can.
You want us to approve this or not?
I, I, I believe we have to. It's services that have already happened, so this work was done over Christmas break.
And they normally do this mid-year, every year?
Every year at Christmas break, yeah, because to give adequate drawing time.
This is already done?
Correct.
Okay.
I think we'll have a roll call vote on this.
Works. Member Frederick?
Yes.
Member Billsborough?
No.
Member Dean?
Yes.
Member Holbrook?
Yes.
Member Lion Welch? Oh, I'm sorry, she's absent. Member Steele?
Yes.
And member Lake?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have the recommendation to approve the purchase of two new vans with upfitter kits. The age and condition of the district's school vans have created safety concerns for the continued use of the vans for various district purposes. In addition, the administration is requesting board approval of quote from Waldock an authorized upfitter for F C A Chrysler Ram trunks to convert the two new vans to ten-passenger seating. The total upliftor baggage for each van is seventeen thousand. Each van is sixty-four thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approve the purchase of two new vans, not to exceed sixty-four thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars per van. Be it further resolved, the Board of Education approve the quote from Waldock to convert each of, to a ten-passenger seating for a total package price of seventeen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars per van as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm concerned about how much storage will be in these new vans.
And I don't have... So the, the style of the van, the vans that we have now are two thousand and nines, and they're much more square-bodied, so those vans would have more storage space in the back.
Four feet by four feet.
But with these ten-passenger vans, um, and I had it, Sheldon, you know it off the top of your head?
Twenty inches.
Well, there's a picture here of-
Right.
Right.
So what it is, so I think the confusion that's coming in is there's a standard ten-passenger van that only has ten inches in the back. The one that they're proposing, which is why we have to have the outfit charge, is it's a twelve-passenger van, but they're removing two of the seats, so that you have more room in the back. So the spacage between the seats, the rows of seats, is smaller, but it's actually a twelve-person van that's- 12 person van that's removing two of the seats. I talked to the lady and she said that's the one that all the other school districts use. I asked her about the back space and she said golf clubs should be no problem fitting back there. She said the only sports teams that she's aware of that have issues fitting their equipment in there would be hockey teams, which we don't have.
Well, I know that I'd used those old vans before and needed all the storage space that they had in them and I'm concerned that these new vans will not have that storage space because they're not just used for golf and I wonder if we should get two new vans that are just alike. My proposal was that we get one van that seats more people and another van that has more storage space.
Aren't there different driving, driver requirements when you go up in seatage of a van?
You can't go beyond 11 passengers, I believe.
And that includes the driver?
Yes, it does.
Yep.
What all do we use these vans for? Golf was mentioned.
They can be used for anything bowling, they can be used for athletics, they could be used if a group was going, you know, a group of National Honor Society students or student council was going somewhere, they could go in a school van. It's not just limited to athletics, but at the same time, we're looking for the best configuration that's possible in the vans that are available today. And one of the other items is also a trailer that we're asking about and, you know, if there's not, those vans could haul that trailer as well. So if, so for example, my wife was a track coach for 22 years. Trying to find somebody to take the pole vault poles to all the way across the other side of the state for the state track meet, that's a challenge because we're strapping them to luggage racks on top of vans and everything else and getting inventive. So no form of transportation is going to be perfect, just like a bus isn't perfect for football kids with all of their equipment and everything else. So we figure that this is the best opportunity for our district at the time.
And it's usually the coaches or teachers who do the driving?
Correct. Yeah.
I'm also concerned that these vans are much higher than the vans we have and I think most of us know that a vehicle that sits well above the road is more apt to be dangerous going around curves and high winds and I'm not sure why we have to have a van that is much higher than the ones we have now.
How much higher is it?
I think about two feet.
I can't, I can't address that. I don't know, I don't know about the height of the vans. I know that school districts go through MyDeal.
It's MyDeal.
MyDeal is the state agency that gives us the best prices and goes directly with dealerships and recommends dealerships that work with schools to get the best prices. And this is what MyDeal has recommended to us for our needs.
So my solution is to get two vans, because we need two vans, but maybe one would have more storage space and one would have more seating.
Well, the storage space will be available in this trailer that we're buying too, right?
If approved by the board, yeah.
Do you take both vans to all the events or just one van?
It depends, it depends on the event. I mean, if you're taking varsity girls bowling to a tournament, there's six girls on the team, you would take one van. If it's a full day tournament and you're taking the entire team that can go, I believe this year we have 24 either boys or girls on the bowling team that would qualify for a tournament, we'd have to take a bus. So it's depending on, actually on the event, but if it's varsity golf, you play six, so it'd be six kids, six sets of golf clubs.
Among tennis?
Tennis would be.
There would be eight, 12.
That could be the two buses, or I mean, the two vans, the two vans and.
The vans go whenever there's a team small enough to fit into the van. It saves driving the bus. So if there's just too many kids, then they take a bus. But if there's, if you can, if you can put the whole team in the van, then you take the van. But there has to be storage space because almost any sport has a need for storage space.
But your lady at whatever this place was says that this is what most school districts buy?
Correct.
Didn't have most, we could only have a 12 passenger van, but it's actually 11 including.
11 including, we could not get insured for anything more than that. Matter of fact, at the midwinter conference that I was at, I was at a SETSEC presentation that actually gave a list of things, blame your insurance company because SETSEC will not insure a 15 passenger van, SETSEC will not insure this type of thing, so, and that was, that was the top. The vans was the top thing on the list, so.
What exactly does this adjustment do? Do they actually put the seats in?
Well, it's removing those two seats.
Do the vans come empty?
No, I think the vans will come like standard, so like I said, this one's coming like a 12 passenger and then they remove those two seats.
And that costs $17,000?
And then they up that other stuff.
They're like customizing them.
To make it customized for.
They're going to have TV sets and a bar?
Also lift it, add some hydraulics. Yeah. Speakers in the back.
So it says wall and door panels flying included in base price, but everything else looks like it's an upturn. Aluminum running boards, window tint, reconfiguration of seats.
We have two vans now.
Two 2009 vans that are, in our opinion, past their years of service.
Oh, I've already, I've heard that several. That's not disputed by any means, by anybody. Are they 10 passenger now? Are they the same thing, did we do the 12 passenger?
They're seven.
Seven?
You can see seven, I think, isn't it?
I don't think so because I think Holly told me they were 11, so when I asked Holly, she told, when I asked her what we needed, that's what she told me they were.
The vans we have now, you can carry seven people.
Plus the driver.
Plus the driver.
So that could be with the back row of seats removed, you know, like this. And I'll be the first to say, you know, we're fortunate enough that we got transportation money from the state that's allowing us the funds, that we're not taking this out of our general instructional fund. And we can't guarantee that money every year, we can't count on that money every year, but I believe a school district our size would benefit from more than two vans, but if we're looking to replace two vans this year, I didn't want to go and say, well, let's go for four because that doesn't seem financially responsible. But if the money is there next year, we could look into different configurations of vans. We could, I mean, I worked for a school district that had a cargo van that had a driver seat, a passenger seat, a lot of empty space and bad brakes, and they used that to haul a lot of equipment. It's just what does the school district want for our kids and our coaches?
So you think it's two feet higher than the existing van?
Yeah, we measured it today.
So the existing van is 79 inches?
I guess I couldn't say for sure it's 79 inches, but.
A 21 is 78, .2 is 79.
The mechanic told me.
So 24 inches on, it's 100 and something inches tall?
I'm just telling you what the mechanic told me today, what he estimated, it would be about two feet taller. Maybe he was wrong, I don't know.
That's significant. I mean, two feet's a lot.
Yeah, and.
And if it's not two feet, on a day like today, when it was windy and there was even a warning about, you know, wind gusts can play havoc with a top heavy vehicle. And bus drivers drive those every day. We know that, yes.
Well, there's a difference between parking a bus and a van.
True.
So what are your suggestions to get another quote?
Our recommendation is to purchase the two vans as presented to the board.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's now up to you guys.
We'll call.
All right, well, let's have a roll call.
Member Steele?
Yes.
Member Lyon Welch is absent. Member Frederick?
Yes.
Member Bill Spurrow?
No.
Member Holbrook?
Yes.
Member Dean?
Yes.
Member Lake?
Yes.
Motion passes. Announcements and comments, the Board of Education's next regular meeting will be held Monday, February 24th, 2025 at 6 o'clock.
You got the trailer?
Oh, the trailer, sorry. Recommendation to approve the purchase of a new enclosed trailer. Administration is requesting board approval to purchase a new 7x16 Hallmark Wells Cargo Enclosed Trailer from VIP Trailer Sales for the amount not to exceed $6,675. Be resolved, Board of Education approved the purchase of a new 7x16 Hallmark Wells Cargo Enclosed Trailer from VIP Trailer Sales for the amount not to exceed $6,675 as presented. Is there a motion?
So move. Support.
Any discussion?
I've talked to the football coach because the football team will be using this trailer and he fully approves of this, so I have no problems with it.
Most of my questions for the football team?
It's, it would be a district-wide use trailer that the football team would be welcome to use when they haul their equipment. But it would not be limited to just football use. It will be a district trailer.
Okay.
Do we have another trailer? We must.
Not an enclosed trailer. The band has a trailer, but that was purchased by the band boosters and is specific for band use.
Okay.
What we had, what we had was a box truck for the district that the football team used to haul their equipment to games until I believe it was the Harper Creek game when the transmission blew halfway up there. And it didn't seem financially reasonable to buy a new box truck that would, that could best be, we could do the same things, haul the same stuff with a trailer and a trailer's more versatile.
Can you pull this behind the bus?
Behind a bus? No. Behind a van?
Behind the van.
Behind a van or one of our maintenance trucks, if our maintenance truck is up to it?
Well, so the football team's going to take a bus. I mean, they got 40 kids.
But they were also taking a box truck.
Okay.
Somebody was driving.
So now we're going to take a van with a trailer and a bus.
Yeah, instead of a box truck and a bus.
All right.
So Paul, what do you expect, what do you expect to pull this trailer?
It could be pulled with one of the vans, it could be pulled with, I've been told it could be pulled with one of the maintenance trucks or if a coach wanted to use their own personal truck because they felt that they were more comfortable that way, we would allow that as well. That would still be covered under our insurance.
Is it large enough that it has to have DOT certification clearance?
No.
The trailer?
Well, I don't believe so. It's, I mean, seven feet wide, so.
And 16 feet long.
And 16 feet long, but the seven feet wide won't obstruct normal side view mirrors on a vehicle, so.
I don't know what the research requirements are, is the height, I'm just asking out of curiosity. I know some of them do.
Right, that hasn't been brought up in anything that we've, in any communications that we've had.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes now. Announcements and comments, the Board of Education's next meeting will be held on Monday, February 24th, 2025 at 6 o'clock in the evening in the library of the Max Larson Elementary located at 25 Car Curse Avenue in Coldwater. We are adjourned.